All right, we are. We are ready.
All right, so good evening, everyone. This is the Needham Board of Zoning Appeals. We're meeting on Zoom and we have the help of Daphne Collins. If we have technical issues, and I think there's also Steve Gentile from the town that's available to help. As I've said all these meetings, if for some reason we lose internet and can't get back, everything has continued until next month, but for 11 straight months, we've managed to get through this without a problem, which is amazing and great. We have three matters tonight. All are accessory dwelling units. But the first administrative matter is to deal with the minutes. Unless there's proposed amendments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
So moved.
Second Kathy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so for the first matter, 16 Edward Dell Avenue. Nader and Rhonda Sidholm, applicants have made application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 3.1, 5.7, section 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw to allow the addition of an accessory dwelling unit. The property is located at 16 Edward Dell Road in the Single Residence B District. On this, I think we have Mr. Gentile.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. George Gentile Jr. appearing this evening on behalf of the applicants and joining us this evening is Nader Sidholm on this Zoom as well. So as indicated, this is for property at 16 Edward Road in the Single Residence B zoning district. It's shown as parcel 10 on map 26 of the Needham Assessors Maps. The lot contains 17,236 square feet of area with 80 feet of frontage on Edward Road. So it's a conforming lot. The lot was previously occupied by a single-family dwelling. That that structure was demolished pursuant to a issued building permit number 120181479. Now, that was just fairly recently demolished. And right now, there is a new two-story, single-family house that's being built at the property pursuant to a building permit number 120191560. The new dwelling complies, as you would expect, with all dimensional and density requirements. But what's before you is an application to include as a part of this dwelling that's going up, an accessory dwelling unit or an EDU. Now, the EDU would be located wholly within the the building that's going up, the house that's going up. And the dwelling unit would be occupied by Nabel Sidholm, Nader's father. The EDU is located in the front right corner generally of the house. It consists of 590 square feet of area. It includes a kitchenette, a three-quarter bath, an open area for living and sleeping. The EDU is accessed from two points. The first one from a doorway that is off of the front entry vestibule that goes into the main part of the house or the principal unit. And the second is a door that goes out to the outside, a small deck that's on sort of the rear right corner of the unit. The main part of the house or the principal unit is going to be occupied by Nader, his wife, and their two children. And as I already indicated, the accessory dwelling unit would be occupied by Nader's father. So the the EDU provisions of the bylaw provide that EDUs can be can be approved in the Single Residence B zoning district by special permit if certain conditions are met. Those conditions are that, number one, there is only one EDU on a given property, that the EDU is located inside a single-family dwelling and not in an exterior detached accessory dwelling, that either the principal unit or the EDU is occupied by the owner of the property, that whichever unit is occupied by the owner, the other unit is occupied by either a member of the owner's family or a caregiver or caregiver's family. The EDU cannot exceed 850 square feet in area and can't have more than one designated bedroom. There has to be sufficient parking provided with at least one parking space for the principal unit and one parking space for the EDU. There has to be adequate provision for waste drainage and so on. And there has to be compliance with building code with respect to egress. And in that regard, in addition, any access points, there has to be an access point from the single-family residence. Any exterior access points have to be consistent with single-family. And and as I said, the interior doorway has to be, that's to be an interior doorway between the units. So as you can sort of see, it's pretty simple in this application to see that it meets all the requirements. In this case, there's only one EDU proposed. It's inside, wholly inside the the single-family house that's being constructed at the property. The principal unit is going to be occupied by the owners of the property. The EDU is going to be occupied by a family member of the owner. The EDU in this case is 590 square feet, so it's well less than the 850 square foot requirement. It only has one bedroom. There's a two-car garage as a part of the house that's being built. In addition, there's two spaces for cars in the driveway outside, a total of four spaces. So there is adequate parking and compliance with the bylaw. Because this is a part of a single-family house, there's no separate provisions for waste or drainage or such that would be required. So it meets that requirement. It meets the egress requirements with respect to the building code because there is both an interior and an exterior egress. And the exterior egress being located on the side of the house, sort of in the back corner of the EDU, you can't see it from the street and you can, you really can't even see it from the side. There's only one small vantage point really towards the back right corner of the property where you would really be able to see it. So it meets the requirement that it doesn't detract or is otherwise inconsistent with the single-family appearance. So this EDU meets all of the requirements specified in the bylaw and it's a it's an attractive dwelling that's being proposed. You would never know that there's an EDU in it from the outside, and so therefore we'd ask that the board approve it.
All right, thank you. So let me run through, the planning board had no comment. The excuse me, the building inspector had no comment, provided that you meet the requirements of the bylaw. Fire department had no issues. The health department wants you to check for pests and have pest controls, but I I I don't, I've said before, I don't think that that's an appropriate condition for a zoning permit. They can regulate that and you'll pay attention to it. The engineering department has no objection. As I think you know, we've on a regular basis been attaching a special permit condition that requires the owner to respond to the building inspector's request for information about who's living in the unit within 30 days. And if he failed to respond, then the building inspector has a right to terminate the permit subject to an appeal to the board. And we also like to point out to everyone that under the bylaw, the permit is personal to the current owner. If the property is sold, then the permit terminates and you have to apply for a new permit. So are there any questions from the board?
I have one question, George. If you can just walk us through the the diagram as to exactly where the EDU is. It wasn't so obvious. It's so well-hidden.
George, I think you're still on mute.
How's that? All right, so here you have the front elevation of the of the house from Eduardo Road. And the EDU is in this sort of this part of the house right here. So as I said, you you can't tell, certainly not looking at it from the front, you can't tell that there's an EDU in there. And then looking at it from the side, so this is the right side if you're looking at it from the front. And the EDU is contained in this section right here. In fact, the doorway is sort of on this wall on the sort of around the corner.
Okay, great. So that's the door to the outside right there. Thank you.
Yeah, so so now let me show you, I'll go to the the floor plan so you can see it there. All right, so here's the the first floor plan. Of the structure, here's the garage, there's the entry door here. And this is the EDU right here and again in the front right corner. So this is, there's a front foyer hallway right here. Here's the interior door to the EDU. And then here's the open space, which is the living area and bedroom area. Small kitchenette area, a three-quarter bath with toilet sink and shower. Here's the egress door to the deck on the outside. And again, you couldn't actually see it on that side elevation. We will get it from this side. The only way you even see this door is if you were standing sort of up in this area. So so it's wholly contained within the house. It's really in fact, the the only distinction in this case really that makes it the EDU is really it's the kitchenette piece that separates it from just being another bedroom that would be in a house. So so it's very, it's very well integrated into the house and very attractive and you know, very well thought out.
Although I would say that the other difference is that it has two means of egress. It's not typical for ordinary bedroom.
True, although I have to tell you, I've seen several lately where there's a maybe more so on sort of more luxurious, but I've seen a few with sort of patios and verandas and things like that off of a master bedroom.
Master, okay, great. Thank you, George.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone from the public here, Daphne on this?
I see, we do have one raised hand and Karen, I am going to promote you as a panelist. And all right, Karen should be, should have joined us.
I'm here, yep.
All right, could you please give us your name and your address, please?
Yep, I'm Karen Shakowsky at Nine Savoy Road. And I was just wondering about in terms of occupancy after this owner has, if this owner sells the property, what are the rules in terms of of occupants?
The permit terminates when they sell the property. They have to come for a new permit.
Okay. And then it would be, it would go through the same process. I'm assuming. Okay, I guess that's the only, the only, of course, that's the only issue that most people would care about is if this could be a rented unit at some point. And so I just want to, I'm just, I'm just curious about whether it's always going to be sort of an in-law suite.
Well, it has, it has to be, well, I mean, yes, it, the kitchen would have to be removed if they didn't have a special permit.
Okay.
And it's over the concern that a non-family member might move in there, that we put in this special condition so that you as a neighbor, if you thought it wasn't a family member, you go to the building inspector, then he can require them to demonstrate who's living in the unit. It has to be designated person under the bylaw.
Okay, great, thank you.
Family members or a caregiver.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming. Does someone want to make a motion?
Sure, a move that the applicant's request for a accessory dwelling permit under sections 3.15 and 7.52 be allowed with the proviso that if the owner is requested by the building commissioner to document who's living in the in the EDU, the owner must respond within 30 days or the special permit is subject to revocation, which could be appealed to the zoning board of appeal in a public hearing.
Second that, Kathy?
Second that, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Luck.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, our second case is 1625 Great Plain Avenue. John, Danine, and Cindy McGowan, applicants immediate application of the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 3.15, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw to allow the addition of an accessory dwelling unit. Properties located at 1625 Great Plain Avenue in the Single Residence B District. Who do we have on this?
Paul, contractor.
Good evening, Paul. Why don't you just give us a little summary of what
Yes.
Contractor?
Yep. It's an addition, basically an additional side of the houses. George kind of fills you all in on the info of that, you know, coding and all that for the new, I know this is a whole new thing that you have in Needham. The EDUs and stuff. The only thing making it that EDU is the kitchen part of it. Besides, that's about 750 square feet roughly. Some other is going to be moving there. It's open to the inside of the house. Do an opening. Exterior-wise, just keeping it the same look as the house, so it doesn't look like it was a completely different part of it, so.
Let me run through, I have a checklist.
Yep.
Let me run through that and make sure this ticks all of those. It has to be subordinate in size to the principal dwelling. It looks pretty, pretty large. It's almost as big as the, but I guess it's not all an EDU. There's some other things in there in the addition.
Just the garage underneath it. And a stairwell, like a unfinished area to the left of it.
Right. And it has to have a living, sleeping, cooking.
Yep. One bedroom, one bath. Kitchenette area with dining, kind of a living area, living space that.
And it has to maintain the appearance and essential characteristics of a single-family house.
Yep.
The the owners of the property are going to occupy the main building and I guess the EDU is going to be occupied by, did you say a parent?
Yeah, her mom.
Has to be less than 850 square feet. You said it's 750. Has to be attached. What about parking?
Parking is the garage on that side. The main house is, they're parking to the right. And there's going to be a small driveway there for, you know, another vehicle, so.
And then it has to have adequate sewage and drainage. I take it that'll be through through the main houses.
Correct.
Connections. There have to be two entrances. Can you just point those out to us?
Yes, there's one. I don't have that plan pulled up on here. So there's one going through to the main house. There's one front door at the next to the garage.
Stairways have to be enclosed and as we noted before, permit expires if the property is sold and then
Correct.
You just have to come in for another permit.
Yep.
So let me just go through the comments. We have the planning board had no comment. Fire department had no objection. The town engineer pointed out that you need a stamp survey plot plan that needs to show the town's easement. There's apparently a town easement on this property. And also you have to comply with the stormwater
Correct.
provisions, which you have apparently not done to date.
Yeah. Right, because it's adding more than 25% of a new roof line on there, so.
The the health department wants you to do pest control if there's any kind of problem. And the building inspector has expressed some concern about the unfinished space
Okay.
that's down below. What what are the plans for that?
Nothing of zip now. I mean, it's kind of where the as you would go in, I guess, just, you know, the stairwell is right there, so.
All right, so.
For it to be finished or keeping it unfinished for, because of the
He's just concerned that it might be added to the 750 square feet to take it over the 850. So I I guess we could just put in a provision that
Right. It's unconditional with
You won't be expanded by finishing that space.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so anyone from the board have a question? No, do we have anyone from the public here on this? I think you said there were some people.
Yeah, we have five attendees, but none are raising their hands on this item. So we have no, no raised hands at this point.
Good. So we ready for motion? You want to do this one, Kathy?
Sure, yeah. Let's see, so I'm just getting up my agenda. So I move that we approve the applicant's application for a special permit under sections 3.15, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw to allow the addition of an accessory dwelling unit at the property located at 1625 Great Plain Avenue with a few conditions. One is the submission of a stamped survey plot plan showing the easement. The next is to comply with the stormwater provisions as outlined in the
Yep.
letter. Also to, let's see, submit any necessary pest control paperwork to the Department of Health. And also with the condition that the EDU cannot be expanded by finishing the currently unfinished space below.
And Kathy, also, would you accept our addition of our standard condition about
Correct.
Or a requirement to respond to a request from the building inspector to prove who's living in there within 30 days?
Yes. So added.
Okay, I second that motion as a minute.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, done. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
All right, so our third and final matter is 86 Plymouth Road. Lakshima, I'm going to mess this up, Belachandra and Patrick Stern, applicants immediate application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under section 3.1.5, 7.5.2, and any other applicable sections of the zoning bylaw to allow the addition of an accessory dwelling unit. Properties located at 86 Plymouth Road in the Single Residence B District. And who do we have on this matter?
Rick Leland on the contractor on the project and I'm joined with Matt Brown, who's the architect.
Good.
Patrick Stern and Lakshmi Belachandra, the owners.
All right, why don't you give us a little summary of what's going on?
Oh, they had an existing home there that has been permitted back in December and we've taken the house down under permit number 2010059. And we have an additional permit to construct the home, which is currently under construction in the very beginning stages, building permit number BR2010954, which was issued on January 28, 2021. So the house has been taken down. New construction has started. And we're requesting a accessory dwelling unit, which is meets all of the requirements. It is on the left side, back left corner of the house, approximately 830 square feet.
Eight thirty or eight forty-eight?
Eight forty-eight.
Is it eight forty-eight? All right, I had eight thirty on here, but okay, so 848 square feet. It has a bedroom, a living area, bathroom, laundry room. It has a a separate entrance from the garage. There's a, there's a two-car garage on the house that's presently being built. One of them is accessible to the EDU unit. There's also a rear egress going on to the deck off the back of the house. And it has a complete kitchen with, you know, a full, a full operating kitchen in it.
Can you show us on the floor plan, the entrance that's connected to the house?
Yep, Matt, can you pull that up?
Yes, let me pull that up here. Okay, so here's the first floor of the main home. There's sort of a back stairway to the second floor of the main residence. There's an entrance into the EDU from that hallway. A separate entrance from the garage into the EDU, which is this orange area, and then also a third entrance or egress off to a back porch that is over the backyard of the rear of the house.
Okay, good. Anything else that you want to say?
I think it, it meets all of the, all of the requirements set forth by the bylaw. We can pull up the front elevation too. As you can see, there's, because it's in the rear left of the house, you can't see it from the street or or the sides of the of the houses as well. The sort of back elevation is really, it's sort of the back rear corner. That's the egress right where my pointer is for the back deck. So it really is hidden from the street, does not look at all like it shouldn't be part of the house. It is totally self-contained in the house and and is under the square footage requirement as well.
Okay, so let me just run through the comments. We have the planning board had no comment. Building inspector has reviewed the plan and he thinks it's in compliance. He had it as 830, but I think you said it's 848.
It's 848, yes.
Still under the 850. Fire department had no objection. The health department wants you to do pest control. And as long as I'm on the right one, I guess the the engineering department had a number of comments. Have those been shared with you?
Yes, they have.
So you need, you need to have dry wells for the runoff from the roof.
Yes.
And, you know, I think, and basically comply with the stormwater requirements and apparently you trigger some requirement for notice to the public, which you can work out with the engineering department.
Yes.
And what about this last one about the dimensions shown on the plan?
Or is that
Not match the current plan of record? Does that make any sense to you?
No, it doesn't. Matt, does that make any sense?
No, no, there was some, there was some housekeeping at the beginning of the project. There used to be a a throughway on the side of the on the side of the property that that went up to the adjacent street. So there was some record discrepancy in terms of the deed and that has worked, been worked out with the lawyer since that that happened.
Okay.
Okay, well, you you have to work it out to the satisfaction of the engineering department with the plans. The building inspector. It should be just a mechanical line.
The stormwater drainage and all that had already been approved on the, for the construction of this home already. So it's, we already had submitted a plan to them and it went through the whole, all the departments prior to us receiving the permit to construct the actual new home. It was a whole design sent in to them that was reviewed and approved.
Okay, well, if it's unusual that they would have put it into the letter, but maybe they overlooked it. Okay, well, if it's unusual that they would have put it into the letter, but maybe they overlooked it.
I think what I think what happened is when they originally got this, the ADU request, they were under the impression that it was being added to the house. And then we've since spoken to him, explained to him that the house is already under construction. Is this a piece of it that's being turned into the ADU dwelling area? Nothing's changing on the house other than what it's actually being used for on the inside and the, you know, the kitchen area. The space is still the same. The walls are all still in the same place and all that. So that was, it was just a misunderstanding that's been cleared up already with them.
Yeah, okay. Well, we could, we'll just make a condition that
Yeah.
you have to satisfy the requirements of the engineer.
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone from the, well, first of all, does anyone from the board have a question?
I think they did a nice job to present.
No.
Thank you.
And is there anyone from the public, Daphne?
Best architect to please remove his
Yes.
Thank you. No, we do not have any hands raised from the attendees. So we have no comments from the public.
Okay, so Peter sitting on this one, would you make a motion, please?
Sure. I move that the board issue a special permit under sections three point fifteen and seven point five two of the bylaw to allow the addition of an accessory dwelling unit at eighty-six Plymouth Road, neither mass as shown on the plan submitted to the board subject to two conditions. The first being that the applicant will address the comments raised in the letter dated February sixteen, twenty twenty-one from the Public Works Department to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department. And the second being the condition that John alluded to before that on written request by the the building commissioner, the owner will provide evidence that the ADU and the principal dwelling are occupied in accordance with the bylaw. In the event the owner fails to do so, within thirty days, the building commissioner may revoke the special permit. And such a revocation may be appealed to the ZBA.
Second that, Howard?
Second that motion. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I think we're done with the business for the evening. Why don't I ask? Yeah, all said, we have to write a decision, but you're well in progress. Kathy, why don't you write one of the ones you sat on?
Yeah, I'll take the second one.
Okay, and Peter, will you write up this one?
Sure.
And I'll I'll do the third one. We'll give Howard a a month off.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Anything else we need to do tonight?
I'm looking at George's picture. George, you still on this Zoom?
I'm still on.
Almost demoted you, George, but he always is very interested, so he stays on. All right, everybody. See you next month.
Thank you all.
Nice to see everybody.
Thank you. We're adjourned.